Okay, good evening to you all and it's time for us to begin our meeting. So, welcome to our meeting tonight. Hopefully you got in through the raindrops. I managed to anyway. Tonight is not a regular business meeting, but is what we call a work session meeting. So it's always a little bit different and even our opening doesn't include some of the other preliminaries that we do at a regular meeting. So tonight I'm going to start by asking the clerk to call the roll, if she will.
Mayor Marshburn.
I'm present.
Mayor Proton Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Okay, thank you so much and thank you councilmembers for being here and present. As you know, we have what appears to be a shorter agenda tonight, was he how it goes, but the first item of business is to adopt the agenda. So what is your pleasure?
Second.
Okay. Second, if all in favor, please say aye.
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 If any opposition, no, and there is none, thank you. All right, we'll jump right into the agenda. The first item, discussion and reports. We have two items there and so I believe Mr. Trezenberg will lead us in the first item. So Jeff, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Before we get started on this project, I did want to take this opportunity to introduce you all to the two newest members of the planning department. I try to get them here so you can put faces with names and I'll let them introduce themselves by and large. But we have Mr. Joe Linsky, who is our new planner one on the development review side, and Mr. Johannes Dietrich, who is our planning technician. And guys, if you want to just say a couple things.
Hello.
Hello.
Mayor, council, great to meet y'all. I moved here recently from the Buckeye State, from Cleveland, Ohio, so just happy to be here and been learning a lot from the great staff here in the department and the other departments and development services. So, yeah, just happy to be here.
Now, were you Joe, or?
Last time I checked, yes.
Okay. I didn't know who would go first.
And Johannes.
That's good, thanks. Welcome. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Johannes. I'm a planning technician, like Jeff said. Grew up around here, in Cary, all my life and if you ever find your way into the planning department, nine times out of 10, my face will be the first one you guys see, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome over to this side of the county. Glad to have you, sure enough, and thank you, look forward to. Good things from them.
Johannes has another connection to you. His mom has actually been involved in the Garnertown Players for many years, so he knows the community pretty well.
Okay. I was just at a production of theirs last weekend, I guess it was, so I don't know if she was in that or not, but, yeah. Okay, good. Thanks, Jeff.
No problem. Hopefully be making a couple more introductions to you in the next couple of months. So again, primarily for these, I just use the staff report as a visual aid when necessary. I had hoped to maybe be able to produce a couple more exhibits for you, but time just got away from me here in the last few days. And I don't want to spend a whole lot of time necessarily on how we got to where we are, but if you need to have some questions answered on that, I'm more than happy to kind of go through that. But we did want to get back to you all with, you know, Mr. Singleton's very specific question for us as to what the minimum was needed to get a light installed at Bryan and White Oak Road. And we had quite a few discussions with both developers and different folks at DOT. I think through the process, thankfully, we were able to clear up some maybe misunderstandings even at the DOT level about what might work and what will not work. And we also got to evaluate some of the funding options and for the most part, I kind of hate to say it for the most part, but to rule them out. Suffice it to say, LAP funding was, is not a good option for this project. Not only just the timeframe potentially that we know, it's a little more laborious, but due to a historic, it's not historically designated, but it's historically eligible, the whole kind of farm, old farm area there on both sides of Bryan Road. And talking with the state historic preservation office, it was very clear that if we went down the road of introducing LAP funding or any other pot that federal monies contribute to, a traditional widening was not going to be an option. The road would literally have to be shifted and routed, rerouted, so to speak, so as not to interfere and cross into that historically eligible area. So that kind of left us with just spot mobility funding and then private-led efforts. And so since we last talked, there continues to be projects coming in for review. We have representatives of, one of those projects that came in, in the intervening time, as well as representatives from the one that is on hold pending the outcomes of these discussions. And the one that has come in in the meantime has agreed, I believe in principle, to kind of take the lead on this and have other projects potentially contribute as they come on board. I'm sure there's some legalese that will have to take place to affect that to happen, but ultimately we do have the mechanisms in place to receive fees, fees in lieu. We'll just have to kind of work out some of the distribution parts. So I'll go back, having said all that, I'll go back to the one possibility where we might get some outside, non-private funding. In talking with DOT, there is this pot of money for spot, what they call spot mobility. It's fairly limited. You can't do huge projects with it, but it is a six-month kind of rotate, continual project submittal. It is competitive and it's competitive statewide. We're not just competing with projects in our area, they're all across the state. DOT feels like it will score fairly well, but we just don't know. It's already been put in for consideration, but it's still a couple of months until we'll get those results. So it is, we are in an advantageous area for this pot of money if and when it ever does prove itself an option because we are on the edge of a DOT region. If you remember from your MPO 101 stuff, there's the three different levels. You have the local, the regional, and the statewide. Fortunately, we're right at the edge of a region. The Wake County-Johnston County line is a dividing point. So any project that is close to that border often can be said or categorized as being regional. So it does give us some access into other funding that if this project were located elsewhere, might not be available. Again, given its limited scope, it could largely only handle the extension of a second lane from Hillendale down to Bryan Road. So I'll flip to, so we're talking about, here's Bryan Road. Let me blow this up a little bit if I can. Where's my roles? So here's Bryan Road. Hillendale is just off the edge of this map, but the scope of any spot mobility project would be just to put in that second lane from Hillendale all the way to Bryan. What was unclear to some of the folks was that signalization units at DOT would not allow a signal to be put in with just that improvement. We had heard that previously from the developer at Mahler's Creek, from the work that they had done, that that was likely not going to be an approvable kind of solution. And so while there were some folks at DOT who thought maybe it might be, we quickly were able to resolve that and get the signalization folks directly into those discussions and yes, that alone was not going to do it. And so it was reaffirmed for everybody that what was presented to you last time really is what has to happen. The new developers that had come forward on a project that we call the Walters Buffalo Tracks, they kind of picked up where the engineers from Mahler's Creek had left off and did a little more refinement to that proposal and had more discussions with DOT. So it's still the same principle that we were talking about before. We need to get the four-lane section down to Bryan Road and on the northbound inbound side, we need to go about 450 feet at a minimum and on the southbound side, we need to go about 1,050 feet before it tapers back in. And that's to get enough traffic through the intersection, potentially to be merging back and not be pushing traffic back all the way to Timber Drive. So again, the developers of the Walters Buffalo Track are willing, you have not seen that project yet, we've been holding off on it, really pushing it forward until we've had this discussion. Like I say, they're here tonight. They are willing to take the lead on this because they know it has to happen for, again, for any projects to be considered further. We've talked with Mr. Barta and his folks with Mahler's Creek and their contributions potentially to that. We've also talked with at least two other potential projects and made them aware that they would need to be contributing as well if they come in within the next couple of years while this work is going on. So nobody gets an immediate free ride until potentially after the project is done. So, oh, and then I forget too, we also have a little project, small, but fairly critical. We do have the White Oak Storage, which is another project that's coming forward right at the intersection. They would have some widening improvements that would be required with their project, which again is small but not insignificant. And so again, we'd work that out to try and figure out when is the best time? Should they contribute a fee in lieu to the other team to go ahead and just handle it all at once? Or is there an advantage to them just going ahead and doing their piece? And so there are some logistics to work out, but I think the positive news for the town potentially is that, you know, there's not, there's not funds that you're being asked to match through this. The spot mobility is purely, I think, state funding only. And then from what I understand with the folks at DOT, the signalization would be handled directly by them at that point because it already meets signalization criteria. It's just that the roadways aren't up to par to do it. But again, DOT has a mechanism where they also accept fees in lieu for contributions. So much as Mr. Barta and his folks have offered to contribute their portion of the signalization costs, the district office has a mechanism and process by which they can actually accept that directly and us not even have to get involved in the middle. So with that being said, I'll just kind of open it up for questions if you have them. Like I say, we do have the representatives from both the project on hold and the larger one that is in the pipeline kind of waiting. If you have specific questions for them as well, I'm sure they would be happy to give their insights and input as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trezenberg, and we'll go right into questions. I'm sure I understand correctly that, I guess on page seven, are the recommendations that come from planning, the six that are enumerated there, is that right?
Right. And we just kind of, in that section, I just kind of wanted to give you an idea of what projects are out there and how they might fit into the overall solution. Again, our recommendation is not to proceed with LAP funding, but to go ahead and let the spot mobility process work its way through this first time. We'll see how it comes out. If the timing is advantageous, I would definitely then, I think we would recommend that we let the state handle that. There's particularly some right-of-way acquisition that needs to take place on that Hillendale to Bryan portion that may be challenging and they might be actually better suited to handle that. But ultimately, if that's not an option, then we'll have to look to the development community to take the lead on that.
Okay, thanks, sir. Let's go around the loop, I'll start with Mr. Matthews over here and we'll give everybody a chance to comment or ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to everybody involved on this project. It's great when we can come together and tackle a problem that hopefully will wind up benefiting everybody in a very positive way and this is great and I hope that momentum can keep up with everyone that's involved in this project. Do we have sort of a timeline where you think that all those folks will be coming together and coming back, so well, here's what we're ready to do? Is there a timeline tentative out there we're thinking about or am I getting too creative here?
I glance out at the engineers in particular. On the Walters Buffalo Track, we're pretty much ready to be bringing that to you. There's probably at least another good 10 to 12 months of review work to get it to that point of being approved at a preliminary stage. And then on their, you know, end too, they've got some work to do as well. But I'd say we're probably at least a year out or just about maybe 10 to 12 months from getting a formal preliminary approval set and hopefully construction drawings as well.
We're talking about for that intersection, correct?
So that's, well, that's for their project and then we'd have to, yeah, that will be a separate review with DOT, so you all may be able to speak to that a little better.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Randy King with Pulte Group. We're excited to be here. We're excited to be, to have a project that's coming, hopefully in the near future for rezoning. When we learned about the issue with these road improvements, we began to work with your staff and our engineers to look at this. I believe, I look back, it was March 4th that we had the all-hands meeting with all the town staff and in C D O T and that's when I think it became clear that the four-laning of this intersection is what the ultimate solution is. Since then, we've gone to work, we've really surveys and engineering on trying to get to a preliminary design because I think y'all have hit the nail on the head is that there's a lot of engineering to do before we can get to the right alignment and understand what the right-of-way needs will be, but we're pursuing that. So we're, I think about 45 days in. We just got the surveys yesterday, so we met with engineers yesterday, so they're trying to thread the needle to get that four-lane section through there in a way this is least impactful to the adjacent properties to minimize the amount of right-of-way that's got to be gotten. So I'm happy to be here tonight, but I feel like we're maybe a month early. I think if y'all have another working session in a month, I'd like to be able to bring back a little bit more tangible proposal and a schedule for the roadway work. I think Jeff has mentioned that our rezoning is, I think, just about ready to come forward. If we can be working on that at the same time, what I would hope we wouldn't have to do is to hold up the rezoning while we try to figure out all this roadway and because DOT is involved, there's a lot of review. And I would think if we, on the pace we're at, we'd be lucky to submit plans, 65% plans for DOT and town review by July or something like that. That would allow us to go out and really start getting right-of-way and getting that moving. And yep, hopefully in nine months to a year to be ready to talk about construction. That's the timeframe that we are chasing, we'd like to be able to achieve. But we're working on, I'd like to ask if we can come back in March and give you a better update on that, to be okay.
Phil, if you don't mind, let me go around the loop for this gentleman. If anybody wants to question him, we'll circle. Mr. Singleton.
Yes, thank you for coming here tonight. Appreciate it. Appreciate you and Mr. Robertson, Mr. Barta and I know.
Overcast.
Overlaid, overcast, yes. Formerly with DOT and now with Kimberly Horn, I believe, right? Okay. Jeff, to clarify what's going to be done, I think, and we touched on this earlier, but we're going to have two lanes on both sides of the road, have to go to and through the intersection. We know that the apartments down there that are being built elevate down at Salt Hill Road and White Oak are going to make some improvements there. And I'm looking on this, as far as the two lanes going through, does that mean there's going to be an additional separate turn lane into Bryan Road or is it still just two lanes there? I'm looking on here, it looks like a straight and just a turn lane. I'm just trying to determine, is there going to be a separate turn lane required there along with the two through lanes?
Yeah, I think that would probably get built in at some point. There probably would have to be. So I think as they get through their more specific, and that will probably come up more as a discussion of some of the specific TIA requirements, just for turning movements. So yeah, I would expect that there'd be a northbound left.
Okay. The storage, mini storage, I know was slightly just, I reckon, north of that intersection and I'm assuming that in this build out of this intersection, when it happens, there may be a designated left turn lane into that or that way? With the signal there, would there be a designated left turn lane? I don't know, I'm just asking. Because I know that's a low, I mean, that's not a high-traffic.
No.
Business, which is actually a plus of where it's going.
Again, I think it'll be just the amount of traffic movements, the turning movements that need to take place. If it's insignificant enough, maybe not. I think it is important to recognize that this would not be the full future section which would have that center turn lane or median all the way through. This would be literally just to get in the necessary laneage that you have to have. But again, if the traffic, the turning movement warrants it, then it will have to accommodate that left, any left turn that's created by new development.
Okay, someone else ask?
Thank you, Singleton. Mr. Behringer?
No, I don't have any questions. I'm just, I'm real happy to see this coming to fruition. Bryan Road and White Oak Road are a challenge and I'm happy to see the developers working together to make it happen and look forward to the final project.
Mr. Dellinger.
First question is, how much is it going to cost?
So under this scenario, the cost to the town should be pretty much just our time.
The total cost?
The total cost, I do not know. That would depend on their estimates from their engineering work.
Whatever agreement we're making is the town would not pay anything for any of these improvements?
To my understanding, that's not on the table.
Regardless of the cost?
But I'll let them clarify that.
Our intention that the town would pay for these improvements, there is work to be done as far as getting right-of-way and easements and that type of stuff. If the town can help us with those types of things, that certainly can be very important. But as Jeff said, we are looking at parts that DOT would fund to see if, and I think DOT was, I think they essentially said, if we can get the four lanes through, that they'd find a way to put up the signal. And so, you know, that, so there is some public funding to this improvement, but we don't anticipate that the town would be sharing in that.
This, would we ultimately not want to have White Oak be four-lane divided if that's not the work that's going to be done for down there? Would we redesign our transportation plan to just make it two lanes or two lanes and a turn lane? I'm kind of concerned that the transportation plan has it as four-lane divided and it's a pretty significant section that wouldn't reach that. So I just want to make sure our future planning is, I don't see the see the point in redoing the road in 10 years. You know, so I'm curious as to what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, no, I think the good news is, is that the development that is taking place on the east side, they will be doing the widening there, so it just won't be utilized. It'll be striped out temporarily. And then the west side, where the farm is, you know, once the ownership there decides that they want to develop, which they can do, whether it's designated or eligible historic or not, they can do whatever they want as a private entity, then we would get the other side, that west side widened as well. So really, I think we'd be starting, hopefully primarily kind of in the middle, and then the approved projects already are going to be adding to the eastern side, and then future projects would add to the western side. And so we would get there, and there may be some small pieces here and there. But for the most part, the land assemblages along this corridor that folks have been considering, they will handle almost all of the widening. I'd say probably at least 85, 90% of it when those adjacent properties develop.
The turn lane, the southbound turn lane on White Oak, there wouldn't be, that's the only work that would be done on that side under this scenario, not the full widening?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Vance, anything?
All right. This is a lot of work that was done very quickly, and it's good to see the partnership among the developers to work to get this significant improvement done. First question is, in reference to the SPOT, if it does not score well on the SPOT, and we don't get the funds in, are we prepared to move forward with the project if we don't get the funding from SPOT? We give a chance to get back here.
I'll ask for that important clarification, but could you repeat the question?
Yes. If SPOT, if it doesn't score well on SPOT, and the funding that we would receive from SPOT, are we prepared to move forward if we don't score well?
So by and large, that SPOT project takes the place of what the Mahlers Creek folks had already, we had already talked with them about what was going to be required as part of their TIA. It wasn't quite the whole length, but if you'll remember, they did have the requirement to do a turn lane of a, you know, a reasonable distance. So I think at that point, primarily foregoing the SPOT mobility funding just becomes mostly, not entirely, but mostly just a redirection of Mahlers Creek funds from reimbursing DOT to either doing that part of it themselves, or working with the Pulte Group to coordinate that work with them.
So no foreseeable funding issues? Okay. All right, the next one is, I'm right there. With the cost estimate, well, I shouldn't be concerned, but because we are not paying for it, it's going to be on your end. But it is a curiosity of mine, because based upon the last cost estimate we got, I'd just be curious to see how much it did go up, just for personal information. And I'm assuming you'll have that later on, once the designs are more refined and developed, you'll be able to provide the profiles and the turning lanes and everything else to us, and we'll be able to take a look at that as well, which is, which is great. One last question in reference to keeping it out of a lap and keeping it from going through the different steps that we have to go through with DOT and other agencies. If we go, if it goes through and is funded by the developers to complete this, will we have to coordinate with SHPO to have them look at what is being proposed? Okay, okay. And we will only need one alternative, instead of two, to be steady, one alternative? Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, I'm going to circle back one more time. You give everybody a chance. Do we, do we know when or how long it would take to know what's going to happen with SPOT, or when that would be approved one way or the other?
I want to say that it's in the next 60 days approximately. We were getting fairly close, I think, to a sub-middle date when we had the conversation, so they got it in. We can try and nail that down more specifically, but it is a six-month cycle, so it won't be more than a couple months at most.
Phil, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Singleton?
Yes, Jeff, on the map, your overhead that has, not these, scroll down, keep going. Yes, right in here. So you said that the gray lines, which are a little harder to see, would, has the right-of-way within those gray lines that are needed to make these improvements. But my curiosity question is, the yellow lines that are shown on both sides of the road, is that available right-of-way, or is that what may be needed for easements, et cetera, et cetera?
Those are actually just measurement lines.
Okay.
So the gray, the gray does represent the existing right-of-way.
Yeah.
And then the red, as I understand it, is the edge of pavement, the minimum edge of pavement as it's envisioned right now. So given that it would need to tie back into grade, you can expect that there's going to need to be some construction easements and what have you. Yeah, I wouldn't expect them to need to go any further than where the yellow lines are, but the yellow lines are not a dimension, they're just a measurement.
I wonder, they were pretty wide in a couple places, and I thought, man, this is right-of-way. I thought maybe, I was just curious to get kind of close to the houses, the two houses there.
Same thing.
One other question for staff, Jeff, and I reckon this may apply to a specific project, the Mahlers Creek project, not the Pulte project, because that's back on New Bethel and Hebron Church Road. Would, with these improvements at the Bryan Road intersection, which is just two lanes, would there be any turn lane or any widening expected on that side that may be required by the project? I can't remember if it was required by the project or not.
If I recall correctly, Rich, I think your project did require a left turn lane on Bryan, from Bryan to White Oak? No? Oh, so there wasn't? Gotcha. There was not a lot of competing right-turn movements, so since everybody's turning left anyhow, that was not envisioned.
That was, TIA determined that, then, that most movements were left. Okay. I couldn't remember that discussion. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Ms. Behringer, anything else? Mr. Dellinger, your turn?
Attorney question. So what kind of guarantees would the town have in place for the completion of the work relative to the issuance of COs? And since you have a cooperative of entities, how would we hold them accountable to whatever that guarantee is? I mean, we all know, construction projects can end up running long, and what you don't want is it running significantly longer than the built, not complete build-out, but when you start putting, getting people into the neighborhoods and increasing the traffic before the work's done, and then it's even more difficult. So what's sort of the status and situation of making sure this roadwork is completed, at least sort of in tandem with when they're ready to start moving folks in?
I have to defer to Mr. Treisenberg, but I mean, typically, the infrastructure improvements have to be done at certain, before another phase can be done, or before certain COs can be issued, so.
These are off-site, so it's a little different. And you have multiple entities that are sort of, one's taking the lead, but multiple are sort of buying into this concept, so.
So thinking off the top of my head, to a certain degree, I did give this a little bit of thought, I think it will be critical for us, as you all as a board, to at least see the Walters Buffalo proposal, and similarly let that take the lead as far as your consideration of approvals. And then we can revisit Mahlers Creek right behind that. The one thing that I think that is helpful potentially, it is somewhat dependent on the SPOT mobility funding. If that comes through, I think the Pulte Group's timing on their part becomes a little less critical, at least for the Mahlers Creek project. Because the Mahlers Creek project, if SPOT mobility funding comes through, that was the bulk of what they were being required to contribute to the process. So if the Pulte Group then is lagging a little bit, or is just, you know, taking a little bit longer to get their stuff put together, we've got kind of the improvement plan for the Mahlers Creek part. Now, if the SPOT mobility funding doesn't come through, we do need to, I think, have a conversation about that as the approvals work through, as to, you know, how many, how many homes are we going to allow in Mahlers Creek to have a CO before that right turn lane has to be installed? And then the rest of it, I think, yes, there are other projects in the background, but they're far enough, going to be far enough behind that I think, you know, most of the timing then will fall to the Pulte Group's project and will tie those improvements specifically to them being able to record a particular plat for a particular phase, and we would determine what that appropriate timing would be. And then similarly, if any other projects come on board, we can do the same thing.
It still goes back to my question on how we guarantee it. Pulte could go out of business, or they could sell it to someone else, or they could decide to wait four years, and other projects could come forward. So this is sort of where my concern is, is knowing the timeline of the build for all the work, and then seeing how all these projects line into that, and then again, making sure that the work is done as close to when it's needed and doesn't get pushed away somewhere. And then we've got all this construction happening, and this improvement's not done, and without some of it being reduced to writing, it kind of gives me concerns.
Yeah, yeah. And we would definitely want to, when you're considering potential of approving a rezoning, we do want to, we want to have that very crystal clear. So, you know, if Pulte were to, for whatever reason, walk away from the project, there's still a condition tied to the Walters Buffalo tract subdivision approval that whoever picks it up, you know, if it's prior to the first plat, if it's prior to the second, you know, phase being platted, that carries through regardless of who's picking it up. And then if there's another project that comes down, and let's just say the Pulte project falls apart, then that organization, if we have, if we have, again, that same kind of condition, and that condition's no longer really an option because Pulte's walked away, well, then that other project's going to have to come back to you all and negotiate something new. So I feel like we can have those set in place. We just need to be, when we get to the point of bringing that to you for decision, having those milestones clearly set out for you.
They need to be set out and agreed upon. I think the thing that comes to mind is Amazon. So Amazon had a very explicit condition around opening. It was black and white, practically one sentence, and a special use permit, and they wanted to do it early, and we had in writing, you can't. And so I just, things aren't written down, I get nervous.
Yep. I understand.
One last question in reference to, I heard the gentleman, your name again, sir?
Randy King.
Mr. King, state that the plans would be more developed next month, whereby if we so desire, we can look at the plans then to see what the profiles are going to look like.
That is our hope. Yes, sir.
And in reference to, I got another question, in reference to the town support for right-of-way and easement, can you elaborate on what that means?
We find in different jurisdictions that the towns approach right-of-way acquisition differently. Some municipalities want to participate in that process in that they have a right-of-way person, and they say, we'd like this right-of-way person to deal with our residents relative to this public improvement. And sometimes they leave it to the private sector to do that. I want to work with your staff to find out what the preference here is. And even if it's us taking that on, to have the town sort of back that effort would hopefully be encouraging to the folks that we're dealing with.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. King. Anybody else follow up? Yeah, Ms. Singleton?
One item that Mr. Dellinger touched on, and we talked about it with the Mahlers Creek when we had that here, I think in December, and I've talked to Mr. Barda about it multiple times, was how long it would take, you know, to get approval, it'll take two, two and a half years to start getting homes built. And, you know, I think we won't see these improvements substantially completed before we get COs issued. I think we all agree upon that. We can't just say, oh, well, we're going to wait another six months before they can do anything, or before the system gets up. We need to make sure this is coordinated as best as it can to make the improvements there. I think we all kind of agree upon that. That needs to happen, because all the other units that's already been approved down there, they haven't been built, that are going to be hitting the road sometime in the next two years before this, or hopefully, as Mr. King says, hopefully start sometime next year, planning and designing it, or sometime this year, construction next year, making these improvements. So I think we all are aware of making sure that we do what can be done with all these parties to get it substantially completed before people are moving into homes.
Okay.
One question, and to dovetail off of Singleton's, Councilman Singleton's statement opposing to you, Mr. King, in reference to the schedules, will you be able to have draft schedules available next month, or when do you think you'll be able to provide a draft schedule?
Yes, sir. We'd like to bring that back in a month with, like I said, a little more better development on the plans, a little more definition where right-of-way is needed, and maybe a preliminary budget as well as the schedule. So come back next month with that.
Hey, council is satisfied with Mr. King's responses. Was anybody else going to give testimony?
Just here if you have questions.
Okay. I see Mr. Roberts sitting out there. Is he expecting to?
Okay.
Okay. We'll let you pass tonight, Mr. Roberts, okay. Okay, well, council, so any particular wrap-up? Do I understand, I don't know if we're asking for a motion tonight, or it suggests, considering the adequacy of the options and resumption of development plan reviews on the whole, so?
I think I would just summarize by saying, I think my takeaways from this is that we will come back with a short update in June, or sorry, in May. And then if things do look favorable and the, our staff master plan review wraps up in that time, then we would consider scheduling a public hearing on their zoning in June, and let that work its way through. And then whenever we get to a decision on that, then we would come back to you with Mahlers Creek as a potential revisit. But that would kind of be, again, depending on how things continue, but that's how I would see the sequence of things going.
So no particular action needed at this point?
I think at next month, we do need to at least have a green light that we're open to considering the proposals in light of this development, and that we've answered the question sufficiently for y'all, that we understand what the minimums are that need to be done, and we have an identified path forward.
And I would just say to you all, I join my colleagues here on the council in commending you for what appears to be, you know, collaboration and team effort to move this along. It's refreshing to see this done. I don't know where the others are from. Mr. Barda, he usually comes in from Charlotte. I don't know if that's where you came in from today, but thank you all for being here and being available to council. And Jeff, thank you for your coordination of this process. Okay. Anything else we need to hear on this? Okay.
And so the recommendations, we're kind of, the six recommendations, we're kind of waiting to get more information to see how the pieces saw together. Okay?
Good. All right. Thank you all. If you want to stick around, you can, but I suspect some of you are planning to leave. I see that already. Okay. All right. We now want to hear from our town attorney on item number two, public notice amendment. So I recognize, Ms. Jones. Good to see you, Mr. Barda. Be safe driving back, all of you, wherever you're driving to. Good to see you, Mr. Barta. Be safe driving back, all of you, wherever you're driving to.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I'm bringing to you, it's a minor amendment. We have a local, local legislation here that allows for certain public notices that are required by state law to be published electronically on the town website. This authority came into effect, I believe it was in 2007 for the towns of Apex, Garner, and Knightdale. And then in 2008, Cary was added to the list. It only allows this option on public hearings. And as I provided in the packet, there's probably 20-some different requirements for public notice, some of which specify that they have to be published in a newspaper. And as you probably have noticed, newspaper circulation is down. People don't use that as often to find out about legal notices and public notice. The other benefit of the town's website is for certain notices, you have to publish one time per week for two weeks before the public hearing. Whereas when we do publish electronically, we leave that on the website for the entire 10 to 25 days before the required council meeting. So there's more opportunity for the public to become aware of it rather than, you know, not looking at the legal ads in the newspaper one particular day. There has been at least one instance in Garner where the newspaper did not publish on the required date, and that required a postponement of an annexation. So that had an impact on the applicant at that point. To some extent, some of these fees are passed through to the developer as part of the application fee. So this amendment would not save the budget. It's not, you know, a significant impact. But there is, you know, a cost associated with newspaper publications that is not the same cost associated with electronic publication. This, there still would be any required posting of property, like for rezonings and, and other items, annexation, that would have to be done. This doesn't alleviate the actual physical signs going on the property. But i- if the town council is interested, they are going to entertain some local bills, this short session that's coming up in May, so it could be submitted. I did reach out to the town attorneys for Apex, Cary, and Knightdale, and the responses I received back were, you know, "Let us know if you're going forward," but they, they haven't, their councils haven't joined in, in, in this desire. There's a little bit of concern, you know, in Cary that, you know, you open this up and, you know, the media and the newspaper lobby might not be, be happy about it. Cary did inform me that, for the most part, they pass these fees on to the developer or the applicant. So whereas we have a, kind of a standard application fee, and the, the newspaper ad may cost, it costs depending on how many lines you have to do. So the more detail, you know, or the, the larger the property, the bigger the meets and bounds description, you might get, you know, a higher cost ad that doesn't necessarily get passed on. But for instance, when they publish leases, they require whoever's desiring to lease the town property to actually pay for the publications. So that, that would be another type of option of dealing with the cost. Dealing with the newspaper not publishing it on the right day, you know, that, that can be a factor that's not within our control. It's much easier to, you know, control the town's website and make sure that things get posted as needed. But I'd say that most often, this would come up with, to some extent, we're using it for annexations and street closings mainly. However, you know, we may need it if, if there was going to be more upset bids or disposal of property, those kinds of things, where notices required at different times. So I'm just, I'm bringing this as an option to you. I don't, you know, obviously, there's some advantages with, if we got expanded authority to do this, there would be less risk in using the town's website. For instance, we are using the town's website unless the provision specifically says it must be published in a newspaper. Some other jurisdictions take more conservative view, and unless it's a public hearing, they're publishing everything in the newspaper. So I'd get your feedback. If this is something we want to entertain this year, we'd have to get a bill into the legislature in early May. If it's something you want to do in the future, there's always time to do that in a subsequent legislative session.
This is probably a minor issue. Do you know, if these other towns have what I would call their own newspaper or hometown newspaper that they most likely would publish in?
What I've heard from talking to, mostly to Cary and Apex, is that, you know, although the News and Observer, they don't get the kind of media coverage that they used to get, probably the same as Garner, that there's not, you know, a local reporter that comes to sit in on meetings. But, you know, I don't think any of them have a local, a purely local newspaper that's, that's handling these types of ads.
Okay. Questions for the attorney? Anything?
I have no issues with what Ms. Jones is proposing.
Yeah. Just one more. We, we, we're, if we proceed with this, the proper method will be perhaps to have our town lobbyists to get this information to the proper place in the legislature, is that right?
Yes, my understanding is Mr. Bridges would handle that and, and get a, one of the, our local delegation to, to sponsor it, basically.
Mr. Vance, I'll go to you. Any questions for the attorney? And Mr. Dellinger?
Just that we, you know, we have a, a legal notices section on the website, but it is more dynamic, and there's not sort of an archive of all the legal notices that we make. So my recommendation, I'm in favor of doing this, but I think on the digital side, we need to sort of have this continuous running list of notices that are kind of static so that people can reference them and they don't go away. So that we have sort of this public archive that is kept, but also regularly updated. So people could bookmark it, or they could, and we have an email where people can sign up for them. But that's also different than sort of just having them on the website where it's at a place they can go and see permanence is helpful.
Okay. Ms. Behringer, anything? And Mr. Matthews?
Seems like our website is the local newspaper, so to speak. And I think it's a great idea, yeah, to move forward this, that we've got complete control of it. And, and I think once we do it, we'll see a lot of the other towns jump on board and do the same thing. So I'm all, I support it.
Okay. I'm supposing we don't need a formal vote. We just would concur with your recommendation that we use the town lobbyists to, to see if we can get this bill at the legislature approved.
You could either take a vote, but if you, if the consensus is that you all concur in this, then we can go forward, you know, not knowing whether the bill will pass the first time, or?
Okay. You want to do a thumbs up, council? I think everybody's in agreement. Okay. And you or the town manager, somebody would be in touch with Mr. Bridges, I guess.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Certainly seems reasonable to me.
I'm sorry. Do you think official vote would be better for Mr. Bridges to pass on as support? Does, does that matter?
I would indicate to him, and he, you know, he could chair with the delegation, that the council was unanimously, you know, supportive of this.
Certainly approved it, or, yeah. Okay. All right. Thank, thank you, Ms. Jones. I appreciate your work on that. That should be helpful. Okay, council, I believe we are now down to manager reports. Mr. Manager, I recognize you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, you have the upcoming meeting schedule. If you look at page 11 under Monday, May the 2nd, under O, New Business, you have the LMG Master Development Agreement. We don't believe that's gonna be ready for that meeting.
Seventeenth.
Yeah, likely be moved to the 17th, so if you're gonna move that. A meeting ahead would be good. And then we have a financial report here, if you have any questions. Mr. Beck, Finance Director, is on, with us on team. So if there's any questions, he can answer, or any of us staff can answer. We'll try to do that. While you're looking through that, I'll talk about a couple of other things. And we can come back to the financial report if you have questions. GPAC event, Willie Bradley will be there on April 29th from 8:00 to 10:00. I believe it's trumpet, trumpet player, I think.
What, what day did you say it was?
The 29th.
Oh, I thought you said the 9th. I'm sorry.
No, 29th, yeah, from 8:00 to 10:00. And then at the Garner Rec Center, there will be a family movie night on May the 6th from 8:15 to 10:15. Now, we can turn it back over to David to see if there's anything he wanted to highlight or just answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Beck, if you have any comments, we'll hear from you now, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
I don't, don't have any particular comments about the, the financial report. One thing that I, I would like to highlight, and you'll see this in, in some of the, the budget documentation that will be coming as well, is we've, we've had unprecedented growth in sales tax revenues over the last 18 months. And the last month of revenue we received was the first one, one in a while that we've seen, actually seen a decrease year over year. So I'm not sure if that's the end of the, the, that, that unparalleled growth in sales tax or not, but I did want to highlight that. We'll just kind of see where that goes from here. But that, that may be a reflection on some of the stimulus money not being available, the advanced tax credits, child tax credits, that ended in December. So we may be seeing some of that money that had been pumped into the economy is not there anymore, and, and things are starting to level back out. But that was really the main thing I wanted to, to bring to everyone's attention in that report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beck. We'll see if there are questions. I would just observe, you know, the information you provided there is certainly encouraging. Hopefully, it's a sign that we're coming out strong on, hopefully, what is the other side of a long problem with COVID-19. But thank you for sharing that information. Ms. Behringer, do you have any questions? Mr. Beck? Mr. Dellinger?
My question on the budget presentation next week, and I got the sort of early budget information that you all produced. I just want to ask, are there gonna be sort of several different revenue generating options presented to address the deficits? And then sort of the decision package options that were recommended and some that weren't? Like, what, will we be presented with those options?
I mean, at this time, the staff process has been working on the expenditure side. We haven't offered up any, any revenue generation as far, especially if you talk about any kind of tax increase. This time, there was already a two-cent tax increase built in that was gonna be for future debt. However, you know, in order to balance the budget, you know, we had to kind of use that to balance this year's expenditures. Then that's without adding any, any new initiatives. So at this point, we're not offering up any, any revenue generators.
I would, I mean, I'd like to invest a little bit of time into some of those options, and it'll shorten, I think, the, we have months anyway to do it. And so kind of getting your thoughts as staff on what some of those options are. I'm sure we all have our own ideas and thoughts as well. But I think it'd be good to sort of, you all. Not even recommendations, but options.
Yeah, one, one thought we had, and, you know, as far as the firefighters, you know, we're having to look at funding, up to 15 of those a year earlier than we anticipated. And there was gonna be a one and a half cent tax next fiscal year for that. So, I mean, there is thought that you could maybe move that up, but, you know, that's probably some discussion we need to have, so.
That's what I'd be interested in, just seeing what kind of levers you guys think are available to us. That'd be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vance, any comments to the town manager regarding his information or comments? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Beck, you said that the latest number you got was actually down. So we don't have January, I'm assuming this is January. We, ours is at, and our report here is in December, which is substantially over what was budgeted. So January was less than what was budgeted, correct?
It, it, I'll have to look to see if it was actually less than budgeted, but it was an actual decrease over what we brought in the prior year for the same month. And yes, it, it is the next month that's not included in that, that quarter that you're looking at there. But I just wanted to, to highlight that since the, the data's not included in the numbers there, but we do have that information now. And, and it was about a 5.2% decrease.
Okay. And we also must remember in '21, it's in March and April is when the stimulus money was released. And of course, in '21, those numbers are substantially higher than the 2020 numbers. And so we have to remember that, that stimulus money from March, April, May, and even, even the June some are substantially higher because people have those, those funds to spend however they chose to spend them. So, anyway, thank you for the, for the, the information.
Mr. Matthews, anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Beck, for being available there. I think that's all for now. So was there anything else, Mr. Town Manager?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Okay, council, we'll, we'll ask for any council reports that you have. And I'll start with Ms. Behringer, maybe. Okay. Go to my left, to Mr. Singleton.
I'm bringing up something I have been back and forth with staff on. And I had a couple people complain last week about some of the parking situation out at the post, at the Timber Carlson Shopping Center where the post office is. And I'm glad that business is good, and people were down there parking, but they blocked, blocked the, the drive-up mailboxes. I got pictures in my phone that were sent to me. And we, we need to, we need to sacrifice two, two parking spaces, block them off, put the little rubber things up in case somebody runs over them. So somebody, at least on one side, people can get out there. I had to watch an older lady get out of her car and go up to the mailbox and mail it. And so she had to park. That's, I mean, that's just ridiculous. Just because people can't, can't park. Because the, the, the drive-through lane is tight because of the curb. Anyway, I'll get with staff and work on that. I've done it, and I might can jump up and down about it, but it's kind of blessed. This is a simple solution to the problem. I can sacrifice two parking spaces. I mean, it's great that the, the restaurant business drives a lot, breakfast and lunch, and that's great. And great for the whole shopping center. I have not many people down there. But the mailboxes, they're not there for a reason. Anyway, I'll send an email. That's it. That's my temper tantrum for the night.
Mr. Matthews? Okay, I'll go this way. Mr. Vance, I'll go to you.
Nothing, sir. Not tonight.
Okay. And Mr. Dellinger?
Nothing.
Okay. I want to mention just a couple of things. I'd like to give a shout out to Jill Collington, who has led the effort in our town for Relay for Life for a number of years. I know we just celebrated, I think, the 25th Annual this past weekend, this Saturday. Several of us were out there some, and she's done a good job of leading us through that. I'm not sure yet if we met our goal for this year, not sure. But thank all those people who donated and participated in that. For those of you who might be interested, Congresswoman Ross plans to be in our town, I think on the 4th of May, probably in the downtown area. You know, we got some federal fund. You know, we got some federal funds for the street scape down there, and so I think she's going to be down there, unless they change their plans, maybe between 9:00 and 10:00, if anybody wants to come and show her around, and she wants to take a look, see it, on-the-ground stuff of what this money's going to be spent for. The other thing I would mention is I have received notification about the high school graduations, and so if any of you council members would like to attend those, obviously, we have two high schools here. Thought I had the dates right in front of me, but I failed to note them here, but one's on a Saturday and the other's on a Thursday. They're both in June, I believe, the early portion of June.
Garner's, the Garner High School is at the 11th at 4:00. Since I have a daughter, that's one I do know of. I believe it's 4:00.
You said it's...
It's on the 11th on a Saturday.
I think the other one is at 8:00 on Thursday.
Thursday, I think.
Yeah, I believe that's right.
Eight o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, yeah, eight o'clock in the morning, yeah, that's right. So if you have an interest in attending those, we need to, in fact, I sent in a form today indicating that I would plan to attend, but I think we'll have to receive it. Any of you who are interested, just let me know, okay? All right. Those are the only other things I had, so anything from staff otherwise? John or...
I don't have anything else. Anybody else? Anything?
Okay. All right. Sounds like you're...
I thought the mayor put the kiss of death on us when he came up and said, we only have two agenda items. You know what that usually means, don't you? We get into some long-winded discussion about something not on the agenda. It actually turned out okay.
I'll say only one agenda item next time. No, I'm teasing. Yeah, thank you for your good attendance to the items we had, and no extended discussion. So I believe a motion would be in order. Did I miss anything? Anybody? Correct me if I have. If not, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved?
Take it.
Okay, motion probably made. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And there is no opposition, so thank you, council. Let's see, we'll see you, when do we have our next meeting?
Yeah.
Wow, that's right.
Yeah.
Next week?
Let me just stay up here.
Okay, well, we're getting into budget season too, and I know there's some special meetings in conjunction with the budget that you'll need to be aware of as well.
The work session for May would be on the 31st. Is that right? That's the day after, Memorial Day's the 30th. That's the last day of the month.
It'd be the following day, yes.
Yeah, just want to make sure. Since he mentioned that, and I made the assumption, it was the Tuesday after the last Monday.
I know we made a couple of changes because of some quirks in the calendar, so yeah, I'll have to double-check that one, but yes.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 because that is, yeah, 31st, yeah.
Question. Assuming that the executive order is still in effect, we can do a remote meeting?
Was it 4:00?
Yeah, okay. You'll confirm that or check that, I guess. And then I think there's some setup in the council that has to be done to facilitate that.
We would have to provide notice that it, in advance of that.
It's not necessary as far as I'm concerned. I just don't want to not be available.
About to show good, okay.
Okay. All right, and as we're leaving, let me thank Ms. Knox back there for your assistance tonight, and our two gentlemen in uniform back there. We appreciate your being here as well. Thank you both. Okay? All right. We stand adjourned.